We'll call the meeting to order and I don't have the agenda in front of me, so hang on.
Well, you start with the roll call.
Oh, we'll start with the roll.
The governors, the governors.
Yeah, usually I start with the.
Was Jeremy in there coming at all?
Jeremy told me he was doing virtually. Alright, so pursue it. So this is the Great Barrier Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, November twenty second, six P M. Pursuant to Governor Bakers, March twelve, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's July sixteenth, twenty twenty two revised order. Extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person and those who wish to do so may attend remotely by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technical means. And this meeting is being recorded. In addition, pursuant to section two forty one, one of the town code of separate procedural and housekeeping matters, town residential right to address a board. On any item that requires a vote, it's fine before board votes on that item, such rather than as will be allowed as much time as the funds. Of the item are allowed to have, which won't apply tonight because we don't have any applicants. Okay. So the first thing we'll do is a roll call attendance. Jonathan Haken.
I am here.
Pedro Fertana.
Here.
Malcolm Vick.
Here.
There.
Jeremy, Jeremy Ega.
Out there.
Jeremy is not here yet. Jackie Kane.
Here.
Randy Nelson, here. Alright, excellent. Do we have any formates? No formates today, so we'll move on to minutes of November tenth. We have a motion to approve of the mandate.
So move.
Thank you, Jonathan. Move a second. Thank you, Pedro. Do we have any discussion on the minute? Hearing none. We'll start with Malcolm. Malcolm, what's your go?
Yes.
Alvin.
Hi.
Pedro.
Hi.
Brandy, hi. Alright, and Jeremy is absent. Alright, moving on to the meat of the meeting for the evening is zoning amendments, including strategies to increase housing. Malcolm, were you able to have our copy? We have a hard copy in front of us, so do you have the?
Yeah, I do have. Yep.
Chris, did you want to start us off? Go through this? We looked at it briefly last meeting.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So, I think as I introduced this at our last meeting and Ken thinks the minutes are great in general. They're always great, but I think you captured this introduction well also. So the intent here was to take some of the ideas that Pedro has mentioned over the past two years for incentive zoning. To get some of the ideas from the smart growth zoning overlay districts that we have. And to incorporate some of the work that Berkshire Regional Planning Commission did for us last year. In looking at Stockbridge Road. Zoning and the B two X, so. This proposal. For starting purposes, looks at Stockbridge Road from Belcher Square north to the Jennifer House Commons. Holiday Inn Express area. That is the focus of this. And reason is, is that it's an area that could. Accommodate. Some robust growth in the number and amount of development, housing units. It's got utilities. Roadway, plenty of water and sewer capacity.
Rapid transit, don't forget rapid transit.
Rapid transit sidewalk on at least one side. And so it's, it's an area that makes sense for additional development. It's also an area that is probably going to see development if, if the. Commercial marketplace is left to itself, we'll probably see. Simple commercial strip. Development, box development. That's typical of anywhere USA. Without providing other benefits that this board and other boards of the town have been talking about, namely. Housing and portable housing, including maybe senior housing and childcare and other things like that, so. There are a few ways to look at. Zoning for housing and zoning for affordable housing, one of which is called inclusionary zoning. And that's where. The zoning bylaw requires that any residential development must include some. Must make some of the units affordable. Sometimes that can act to stifle development. Because the economics of a site don't pay for those affordable units that the bylaw requires to be built. This draft takes a slightly different approach. It increases the possible. Residential density on stock, on this area of Stockbridge Road. It increases the base density. And it allows for buy right development, and those are things that this board has heard from various. Developers over the past few years that buy right development without special permit appeals process and the. Kind of vagaries and uncertainties that go with that. That's important to getting anything built. And the second thing that's important is having enough of, of, of financial feasibility and economic payoff. To actually build units that aren't going to pay as much in rent, i.e. affordable units. So this. Draft starts with an increase as a kind of a baseline. So if you. You can go up to a certain amount of density by right. And you can go even more if you include more affordable housing. So that's the, that's the general. Just of this proposal that's in front of you, and that's how I've incorporated all those ideas.
Okay, great, thank you. So a couple things that we were going to think through and discuss for this evening. Were going to be kind of the degree of incentive. And the threshold criteria to access those incentives. And so Pedro, I know you had done some initial thinking on that. Was there anything that you wanted to mention specifically or comment on specifically related to? The draft text that we have?
I think it's got the way, the way that Chris has proposed it, it's interesting. Trade offs. But depend on the. Even the limits and requirements for the units. I think that's really interesting. The lower. Threshold for income, the more units. Build, where it's kind of a one for one exchange. Guess my, my only comment really on the requirement, there would be that twenty percent thing. You know, I don't know if you want to talk more about it. I like the, the one for one exchange kind of idea. So that if, you know, let's say a developer does want to go four stories. But he's only willing, willing to do one affordable unit, then you can only do one extra one. You know, that kind of thing. The, I like the twenty percent because it produces more, but I'm also afraid that it might be a hindrance to the, to the buyer. Just because that's kind of what you've seen it a little bit here, I guess. I don't know if any developers actually. Considered doing it and they will be three over here. The way it was written, remember we had. Inclusionary in, in there. It was, you know, it was terrible, whatever. Much more restrictive and it was really difficult to, to do anything over there and they'll be three, but. My experience with, with this type of percentages of construction and that kind of trade off is that it works really good for big projects, so maybe. Because we have some big lots. Maybe we would consider, I don't know, I don't, you know, that maybe we consider that for projects of a certain scale. Then we apply the twenty percent with projects that are, you know, five, six, seven, eight units or whatever. We do the one for one trade off, like you've written it. I don't know, something like that.
Brandy, Aline's got her hand raised. It may be a technical.
Sure. Aline, did you have a question?
It's muted.
Maybe it was the cat.
Oh, it's the cat.
I want to see this cat on screen one day.
Can, can you share, share this on screen?
I don't know what happened. I'm sorry. No, I, I did not mean to raise my hand.
No problem.
Why, it's, it is the cat.
It was actually raising your tail.
Alright, thanks Chris for keeping an eye on that.
The other comment, just one last comment, that the twenty percent I think would, would be more amenable. If it was applied to a higher percentage of AMI, in other words, from eighty to hundred fifty. I think that would pencil in easier.
Instead of eighty one, four hundred?
Yeah. Just because that, you know, that hundred fifty gives a developer higher potential runs.
Are we aware, are there? There's no like, we're, we have liberty to set that level? Okay, we don't have any sort of state regulations that we're bound by?
No, no, this is, this is up to us. If we were going through the smart growth. Forty R process, then, then yeah, we would have to meet the state guidelines. We're, we're just borrowing some of those guidelines and. Using them as one of our starting points. But there's, this is, this is totally up to the town.
So we were gonna, we're kind of working our way through.
Yeah, I, I'd like to start at the beginning and go through it because. I got lost as soon as I started talking.
Okay.
Any other broad conceptual questions though, before we get into?
Yeah, I think that, Malcolm, do you have any broad conceptual questions?
Uh, no, I, I'd like to go through it too. I, I think it's, uh, just in general, I, I think this is, the incentives are great. I think the. Rest of it needs some work.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we can begin at the beginning. Did you have any broad conceptual issues?
No, I just had a comment about the hundred fifty AMI thing, but I can.
We can get to that.
Get to that.
Did you have any?
Not now.
Broad thoughts yet? Okay, during information gathering, though. Alright, great. So we can start at the beginning, nine fifteen. Mixed use and housing overlay district. Does it really roll off the tongue, the mixo?
I spent some time on that. Trying to come up with. Something less. Bad, that's strange.
So in terms of it being an overlay district, how does the board feel about that, that the underlying zoning would remain and that this would apply? Specifically for these uses, rather than a change to the zoning.
Well, the, if the underlying zoning remains, then we're still potentially subject to. Dollar generals.
Which is something we should discuss.
Yes, absolutely.
Are we concerned about more box development in that corridor?
Yes. Okay, I'll tell you firsthand, I've had discussions with developers in the last couple of weeks, and that's just the most profitable thing for them to do. You know, because those buildings are like five bucks a square foot. And they can get those tenants, those corporate tenants, and they're easy. Yeah, okay. Or more storage units.
So what would you, what would you consider instead, Jonathan, if this wasn't an overlay district?
We would amend that.
It could become the zoning.
Underlying zoning.
So this, but this bylaw only addresses affordable housing units.
This currently does.
Well, it, it, but it has a, it has a list of uses that are permitted, so it's not just affordable housing.
But it has to have affordable housing component in order to take advantage of the, of the. Bylaw, right, to use this.
Of the incentives, of the incentives.
It's like a buying, yeah.
Right.
I like it. I mean, that's what I originally envisioned was an overlay, not a complete housing user.
Right, I think one of the questions we might get from the public though is, you know. How is an overlay different than the underlying zoning? And so there's some education that has to happen around that, right? And I don't know what the general community's sense is as far as whether or not they're worried about box development or not.
It could be made aware of it and get scared.
Well, that, I know once I've worked in there, they don't love it, at least.
Yeah, okay.
So in terms of. Overlay zoning versus just changing the underlying zone. Permissions here. That, that would go back to my, my first comment regarding some, some inclusionary zoning requirements. Kind of backflow because, because the requirements may be so onerous. They, they just don't pay off financially. Construction costs are too much, you know, rents aren't high enough, whatever. Because they. A project won't pencil out, then nothing will get good, good or bad, which is also not an ideal scenario, so. That, that's one possible downside of a, changing it, making it the underlying zone and requiring. The, the twenty percent of units. Now, maybe that's where you talk about, maybe it's ten percent of the units, not twenty percent. And maybe it's a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income and not eighty or a hundred percent, you know, so. You sort of reduce the percentage and increase the rent, if you will, and maybe that helps the project pencil out. If you want this to be the base zoning for the area.
If it's the base zoning though, I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't, couldn't we set this up so that? These conditions only apply for a mixed use product? Like, if it was just straight retail, then. There wouldn't be a housing component at all that would be proposed, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so this would really only apply to a proposed mix.
Sure.
And then I guess we need to understand what we want in terms of mixed use, right?
There's the benefit of the overlay that we would not have to rewrite and hire.
True.
You know, section.
Right.
It's just an overlay that people can adopt.
I guess the only thing I want to be wary of is i- if we think we need to also amend the underlying zone at the same time.
I think it's just for the, the big box.
Right, which is what we did with the M X D, right? Okay, alright, well, we'll have to think about that then. So as far as location, you don't happen to have a graphic handy, do you, Chris, of the location of the performance? Yeah, oh yeah, so we can scroll that, we have that in color on the screen.
I can put the map on the screen.
I think we had spent a fair amount of time last year or two looking at that. The extent of that district and I'm comfortable with it. How does everybody else feel about the location?
It's fun.
It's fine.
Malcolm, you have.
Yeah. But a, a question, I mean, just to clarify, the, the underlying zone in this entire overlay is B two. Is that correct?
I believe it is in the whole overlay, yes.
Yes, okay.
Right. And the B two is, is exceeds the overlay.
Right, and the B two is also south of town, so we can't just willy nilly change B two. Without considering the impact on the south town.
Right.
Okay, so from a location standpoint, this would run from Belcher Square north, as Chris said, north to. The Holiday Inn Express and Jennifer House Commons, so that seems like the right corridor to apply this. We're in agreement there?
So that, that's on screen now.
Yeah, so no change in the location. Right, folks?
Right.
Subject to site plan review, yes, but not a special permit?
Yeah, I disagree with that.
You think it should be a special permit?
I do. I, I. I think we're providing incentives to the developers, but I, I don't think we should give up the town control of the site plan, having the special permit on, especially on. Large developments. If we're going to allow. The five story or four story fifty foot. Buildings on Stockbridge Road with a ten foot setback, we should have some kind of special permit associated with that.
Are there, so, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would want to get your input, Malcolm, then, on how this. Responds to some of the feedback we've heard about the. The appealable nature of the special permit and how that can be a significant hurdle to these types of projects.
But the, aren't, isn't site plan review appealable?
It is.
And we have site plan, we have a site plan review requirement in here.
You do, yeah. Which gives us a degree of control.
But it's not discretionary.
Correct.
The way a special permit is.
That's correct.
Well, that's the point. That's my point.
Yeah, it's. Site plan review is appealable. It's from a, from a. Project perspective, from a lender perspective. It's more akin to, you know, the fact that a building permits appealable. You know, it's, it's a buy right issuance. It's not subject to kind of the, the whims of a board, so it's. To, to a project, to a lender, for example. It's a. Less, less of a burden than a special, than a discretionary special permit process, even though both are.
I, I think if ever there was a corridor that was someplace where we'd want to see higher density development, that, that this is. It, so Malcolm, I wonder if there's some thinking you could do about specific. Issues you're concerned about that we could possibly include as additional requirements in terms of. Design guidelines or, or something of that effect, and, and, you know, maybe it's a discussion of if you're. Going with that five story option and you will but the residential district, there's a, a, a provision for some degree of setback. Or screening or something, but could you think on that a little bit?
I, I can, Jen, you know, I can, Brandy, but. I don't know. I mean, we've never done this. I mean, we haven't given people the right to build. Forty foot buildings by right, you know, with ten foot setbacks on, you know, a gateway road into the town. So. I, I hate to experiment with it, because once you get a building up, you can't take it down.
Yeah, that's fair. That's fair. Okay, so maybe there's some more discussion that has to happen. Does anyone else have a concern about special permit versus site plan?
I don't, I'm, I would probably be, most likely be opposed to a special permit.
Okay. Jeremy, do you have any?
Well, me too, just because that's sort of what's the exercise. That's, that's the hurdle.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you guys are saying.
Maybe, and maybe it's enough. To. Make a project by right, you know, just as, as a baseline. Maybe you don't need to go to four stories. As a starting point. Maybe four stories is the incentive.
Well, in the, well, that's possible too, but in the B two. Nine or more units require, let's see, where, where is this? In the B two, it's multifamily, nine or more. Units require a special permit, three to eight don't. Maybe we can come up with some other dimension where, you know, a threshold, another threshold for. A special permit that would. You know, encompass very large buildings.
Yeah, I was maybe trying to get at that also with the, with the. Density in nine point fifteen point six, allowing a certain amount of density units. Per acre. Maybe it's, maybe it's the density rather than the absolute number.
And, and maybe we, in the purpose and intent. Add a sentence there that indicates why this border was selected. Being on a state road with substantial infrastructure. With walkability to, you know, all the major resources of the town, something I thought that. That can communicate. Why we selected this location.
Yeah, I think go back to this point, or this kind of. Subject, I guess, that Chris brought up about the. Per lot size, square footage, per dwelling even. If I, I mean, where did that come from? Can we go through this in order? Well, I've brought something up, I have a question.
I'm gonna.
I have a question.
Can you look in and we'll get to it in that section? So permitted uses.
Well, actually, I'm on the first paragraph.
You're back to the first paragraph? Well, you gotta speak up then, Jonathan.
I've been trying. Yeah, in the first paragraph, I, I would suggest instead of the permissions, I would say allowances. And in the second paragraph, I would strike B after shall be consist. It doesn't make any sense, I think you meant shall consist.
See, this, what second, pardon, forgive me, but can we, I, I think it would be more productive for this meeting if we talked about the substance of. What being proposed, and we can go for the, you know.
We're gonna get there. This is gonna take two minutes.
Well, if you want to go through the whole thing, I don't know if it's gonna take two minutes.
Well.
Let's just be what we can do.
When we hit the density, we'll address that.
And then, and then the second paragraph, again, the last sentence, I would say within this portion of Stockbridge Road rather than the length of. Um, under the permitted uses. I would have co-work in there somehow.
Oh, it's okay to go to paragraph four now, okay.
Co-work, yeah.
I just think of that as office.
Yeah. You could say including medical offices and co-work spaces, if you want that, I wouldn't have any share of that.
I think we want to encourage co-work spaces, so. It wouldn't hurt to put it in.
Okay, I'll look for the definition that you'll send.
So.
That's a good point, you have to have a definition.
When you, when you get to density. Where does the twenty units per acre match in the?
Wait, wait, wait.
Can we, yes, stick with permitted uses for a minute?
Yeah, let's hang on. So, other people have comments on permitted uses before we move on to any other section. Malcolm, do you have any comments on permitted uses?
Yeah, the, I, I would just suggest instead of the word residential uses, we use dwelling units. Because residential units, as it is in the use table, encompasses a whole, a lot of things that aren't dwellings. And what we're looking at here are dwellings, right?
So where did you put that?
Eight, nine fifteen, four.
No, but how did he do it?
Well, I would just say.
Dwellings of four or more.
Yeah. Okay, so the requirements of the session. Multi-unit dwellings, which are, you know, they're using the language that's in the, you, uh, use table. Of four or more units, which may include live work units. And then under mixed use projects, instead of using resident, devoted residential uses, say devoted to dwellings. Which shall be fifty percent of the gross floor area of the product, project.
Okay, we can, we can work with that.
But I would.
I'll try to.
Because residential uses in the use table includes mixed use.
Okay. So that's fair. So as far as the other alternative uses for mixed use. Do we think light industrial is something that should be included in this list? I, I.
It covers a lot of, a lot of things.
I understand, but it also tends to have a higher nuisance factor, right? It may produce odors. It may produce noise.
Didn't we talk about this before, what it would exclude if you didn't have light, a light industrial?
I think we did.
I thought.
A couple of years ago, when we looked at Stockbridge Road, when we remapped it. And we shrunk the industrial areas on Stockbridge Road. And it would be two around a little bit. We talked about. The applications for the industrial uses too.
Yeah, so what we worried about.
Yeah, so what were we worried about? There were some things that were included, like, if I'm remembering right.
There was a discussion about artisans that are like craftspools cabinet makers, that sort of thing. Um, but I think it bears consideration. That maybe if I am on the second floor, I don't want a cabinet maker underneath me or. You know, are, are we creating conflicting situation by?
Restaurant either.
I might wanna bakery.
You wouldn't want live music either. I mean, there are a lot of.
Is light industrial the same as light manufacturing?
I guess we should make sure we got the consistent language, right?
We, the light industrial use is defined in the S God. On page one.
So maybe that's where we have the discussion.
So, uh, it, 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 it says it's fabrication, finishing, packaging, or assembly operations used a lot, utilizing hand labor or quiet machinery and processes. That are free from agents disturbing to the neighborhood, including but not limited to odors, gas fumes, smoke cinders, flashing excessive bright lights. Refuse matter, electromagnetic radiation, heater vibration. So that sounds right.
That's why we had it. I'm, I'm impressed with the Malcolm, we may have actually read the entire.
Well, I have nothing else to do out here.
So, are we done with that?
Wait, hold on, no, we're still trying to decide if we want light industrial.
We have to define, that's, that's all.
Yeah, did that definition, I'm just looking in the definitions.
Hand labor and quiet machinery and process. Serving the neighborhood, including unlimited odors. Gas fumes, so it's.
Well, so the.
Three of these things.
But wait, the code definition eleven.
No, it's specific, it's on page one twelve of the bylaw in section nine point thirteen.
We would just have to carry that over because light manu-, oh, light manufacturing is different than light industrial, is that what we're saying?
So we should define it outside of the S God and then, uh. Then we can use it.
Or you could just refer to the. As defined in section. No.
So then there was a question here that was flagged by Chris, uses not permitted. Um, did, I, I did not do this, but did anyone check to see if there are items in the B? Two that. Would normally be permitted that we don't want permitted if there's a mixed use?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's necessary, because, um, we're granting, um, incentives. If they do these things. We're not granting incentives if they don't do something.
But don't you wanna have the box store thing, so someone doesn't build residential on top of one? But would you want that?
It happens in the city all the time. Right?
So for, for context, how big is the, the big wide? Just the store.
Fifty thousand?
I don't know.
You think?
The store is over a hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah.
So what would be? A modern day Dollar General is about nine or ten thousand. That gives you a context.
What's the one in Sheffield?
Probably twelve. There's twelve. Not sure.
Do you want that?
Well, so what's the co-op? The co-op is fourteen thousand square feet.
Your co-op is about seven or eight.
Yeah. So if we're thinking about that, that's not.
That's fourteen thousand, I have six thousand square feet here, but.
Is that, that much more difficult? The files could be wider and you wouldn't get so like jammed up.
I mean, my, you know, my problem with the scale of the bill of that type of building is just what it comes with it, which is big parking. And highway strip. You know, that kind of development, but it's a kind of thing we're trying to get away from.
But if you add residential, if you add residential above it and go where it go with it, then you're achieving what we want and you may be providing a. An asset in that first floor that A can anchor the project and B, um, provides some desirable. Permitity to.
I mean, but it could also be, you know, a gap. It could be any kind of gigantic corporate store.
People who close.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just, you know, is, is that the kind of thing we want?
That's. I don't see that problematic.
What attracts a twenty thousand square foot space are those things that are just mentioned, that are most undesirable, in my opinion. At Stockbridge Road, because frankly, it's there now. And we're trying to change it, so why would we want?
More of it.
To tell people that they can just do the same thing that's there, or you can do something else.
But if the goodwill had residential above it, wouldn't that be a benefit?
It's hard to argue that, sure.
Uh, I don't, I'm not of the opinion I'd wanna preclude a larger use. Um. I mean, we are saying retail stores and general service establishments, we aren't saying anything about.
How about you make a swap, when you say that you can't do it in younger line district, but you can in the early. Well, that's interesting.
You wanna move the, uh.
So maybe uses not permitted could be a list of uses that might be permitted otherwise without. Affordable housing in the zone or something. No, I don't see that. Scratch that, rewind.
I don't know, that's worth thinking about.
Some uses might be there, Malcolm, some uses might be worth considering. Like these big uses, can we do, I mean.
But I don't think we need uses not permitted, though. Because if they're, if they're not permitted, then they're not permitted.
So basically what we're saying is that if you wanna take advantage of the incentive. Then you have to do a mixed use project or a residential project, right?
Right.
And your making project has to be one of the nine items that we have listed here.
And if you wanna build a marijuana retailer, it can't be part of this. Incentive.
That's retail, so we didn't exclude.
No, because it's a separate line item on the, uh, use table.
It's separate in the use table.
Okay.
So the underlying district allows it, but this would not allow it as part of the, uh, housing incentive.
You don't think we need more than two?
Let's not get.
No lumber yards either.
Okay, so we don't think that there are any uses not permitted that need to be included. Yes, we're in agreement? Okay.
It doesn't make sense to me, yeah.
Okay, list like allowable uses, laundromats listed like five times. We'll get six floor if you put in a laundromat. That'd be good.
Should have like indoor scheme facility. That should be the ten.
Okay, um.
One question, I, we're, if we're, if we're incentivizing, uh, childcare facilities should not be a. Many use.
That, does that not fall under like personal service establishment?
Community educational.
It's in there.
Uh, we'll, we'll add it to community educate, that's parenthesis seven. Or we'll make sure it's in there somewhere.
Educational use exempt, is that what?
We're running out of kids, I don't know why we need it.
We're not running out of.
We're trying.
Community educational recreational uses is three childcare centers. Are you satisfied that that's enough?
Sure.
Okay, are we able to move on to nine fifteen six density and dimensional requirements? I know there's a lot of discussion that wants to be had here.
Yeah, so where, where did the twenty units per acre? Match from, come from?
I. I thought that was a good place to start, it, it increases. Basically what's allowed there now. Um, so. I thought by increasing the allowable base density, that would be the place to start.
So what if you have a small lot? It, is this, do you divide the square footage? Into an acre and.
If you, are you saying if you have a lot that's less than an acre?
Yeah.
To supply?
Yeah.
So if you have the corner lot there.
Yeah, if you've got a five thousand square foot lot.
I don't think so, cause it's some, cause it's.
Well, we say five thousand square feet minimum, right?
But first of all, as soon as you get into limiting the number of units. I think one of the things that, uh, Jeff Cohen. Suggested he was gonna do and, and Lee is, I forget what he called them, micro units or something. And they're like four hundred square feet.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
And we could use a boatload of those. You know, with one or two people living in them. Just in farm and, and. You know, this is gonna preclude that. It's gonna penalize the developer that wants to do that. So, why, why isn't it enough?
Question is, do we need a density if we've already got coverage permits?
Yeah, we've got, we've got, we've got setbacks, we've got coverage, we've got height, what, why do we need that?
No, that's a fair point.
Density.
Fair point.
All right, one for me.
There's pie here.
But the whole point is you, this is by right, like.
This is by right, yes.
And so that's what you have to decide.
Discussions, since Malcolm.
Well, hopefully, we're trying to get to by right, well.
We're gonna see if we can get to by right, so that's the opportunity. Okay, are we, are we all, Malcolm, how do you feel about, um, striking the density provision in lieu of the coverage requirement?
Um, if, if Jonathan gives me something, I'll be happy to give him that.
I'll let you two duke it out outside of this.
It's true, ultimately. Parking ratios and setbacks and lot coverage really.
That's fine.
And height dictate.
That's a good point.
Yeah, what can fit.
Okay, did you have any other density questions?
I'm just, you know, I, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. This idea that we, that we need more additional space on a lot. That's usually twice enough, three times the size of the actual units being built. So.
And what are you referring to?
That idea that, that we need two thousand square feet, or we need five thousand per feet, or twenty five hundred square feet.
As far as minimum lot area?
Yeah, per unit.
But we're starting a lot, aren't we?
It's just a question that, I mean, we have the, the two thousand square foot per unit thing in here somewhere.
Where?
I think we just.
No, we, we struck the twenty units per acre.
Which included two thousand square feet per unit in the comment off to the right margin.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that by striking the density requirement, we strike that whole provision. Right, and so then we're left with lot area, minimum lot area, this could be applied to be five thousand square feet. I, I mean, from.
So maybe for another day, or maybe for like coffee talk or something that we can talk about that, because it doesn't make any sense to me. Unless you wanna keep things extremely low density.
What, what, what are you talking about?
Just, yeah, it's not for the purpose of this, not for, so we can move on, I'm happy. Are, are you happy with the consensus we seem to be at to, to strike this paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, yeah.
I forgot about the footnote thing you have there, okay.
So, so then, as far as lot area, lot frontage, setbacks. Um, I think, I, I mean, I share Malcolm, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I, I get the sense you have some concerns about. A four or five story building with a ten foot rear yard setback, avoiding the residential use, is that?
Well, here, here's my comment on dimensions. I got two comments here. Number one is most of it is unnecessary, because the underlying B two zone is exactly the same as, as this. As far as lot area, frontage, side, rear, coverage, so we really don't need all.
We didn't need it.
It's close, although this puts a front yard maximum.
Right, and now my second comment has to do with the front yard setback, cause I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. What Stockbridge Road will look like or what we want it to look like. But if, if all the, uh, building that incorporates affordable housing. Has a maximum of a twenty foot setback. But everything else on Stockbridge Road, which is B two, has a minimum of a twenty five foot setback. What are we doing?
Mm-hmm, that's a good point.
Point, good point. Yeah. So.
And why are these so different from the B two X?
Well, if I can answer Malcolm's question, what we're trying to do here is create a corridor. Which is more sort of scaled and, and relational to the body.
Street wall.
And so the further you go into a, into a lot, like the B two goes in twenty five feet, so the further you go in, the less you get that.
So. So can I make?
The aspect of that is, you know, fast traffic and. Um, not very sort of pedestrian and cycling and other forms of transportation friendly. Feeling about the place.
Okay, well, I agree, uh, Pedro, I agree with your, uh, what your goal is, but I don't think it's meeting it. And I, I would suggest that we change the B two to, uh, be a ten foot minimum. But no maximum.
So just go ahead and change the underlying district.
Yes.
This particular provision. For the setback provision, so that there's.
Front yard setback, yes. Then we don't need, then we don't need dimensional requirements here at all.
We'd have to consider what happens south of town. I'm all for it, but I just wanted to bring that up just to be fair.
Okay, that's a good, good point. We, uh, I said that earlier, and that means we have to look at, uh, you know, South Maine and, and, and other areas that are B two. But I mean, if we're gonna, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're saying because it will apply there as well. And what would that mean for that portion?
Good thinking, though.
So right now, the minimum is twenty five.
So we could strike everything else and just have. The, the front yard setback, if that's really the objective, right?
Well, is. If we can reconcile the twenty five foot minimum for all non-affordable housing containing projects.
Hmm, we'll have to think about that one a little bit more.
Yeah.
But do you wanna create a street wall there?
Yeah.
Like what's happening here in, um, downtown.
Where the buildings create.
A wall.
A wall.
Well, how can we get to a wall, because we have so many houses there that are so far back from the streets, it's like, I see. We're trying to come up with something that's approaching the street, but the existing area is so.
Yeah.
Different.
Yeah.
Transition.
Yeah, we have to transition.
Yeah, a lot of legacy buildings that are further back, that.
These will be going like this.
You'd have kind of a sawn-tooth wall.
My, my, my objective there wouldn't be so much a street wall as to, uh, encourage parking in the rear. And in order to encourage parking in the rear, you gotta move the building up more.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other thing we discussed at the last meeting that warrants consideration is how wide the, the right of way is and through there. Because it, you're not gonna be as close as you think you are. Given how wide that right of way is, and that is offering at least some degree of, of. You know, street. That is going.
Kind of a built-in setback?
Yeah.
I mean, the B two F has zero setbacks, so maybe it's better.
But the B two X had some precedent for that, and that's why we were pretty comfortable with that.
Right, but if we do, if you have zero setback here, we still have a right of way.
And maybe it's worth looking at it in some images and just seeing what the different setbacks look like. Cause if we pull up like the mass mapper and look at that corridor, we can, we can kind of scale off. A twenty fifth setback and see what that looks like. Where does that fall now? Is it really as scary as it looks?
And what, and what are you gonna do with that setback? You can't park in it.
You're gonna landscape it with trees. You have nice trees like we do growing up.
So you don't even see the ugly buildings.
I'm not concerned about the ugly buildings, I'm worried about shading the ugly road.
Are we getting sidewalks just out of curiosity?
There are sidewalks on the east side.
It's tricky.
And, and then the west side, it's all power lines. No, but you don't want trees.
No, but you don't want trees under it.
Under power lines. You can. Um, okay, all right, so we need to think about the front yard setback and how it actually relates. Okay, are we comfortable moving on to parking?
No, you haven't talked about the height yet.
Oh, we haven't talked about the height.
Oh, yeah.
So three stories or forty feet max. That's.
That's the underlying.
Underlying, right?
Yeah.
Up to four stories and fifty feet if incentives per. One of the subsequent sections.
Well, per this section.
That's the incentive, right?
It's, it's. It's the whole section, Brandy. Nine fifteen is the whole section.
Um, I thought we, well.
No, it's dot XX, I don't know.
We would discuss the specific incentive.
We should add another.
Um. How's everybody feel about four stories and fifty feet?
I'm good with it.
What, what is the requirement? What, if usually, if if utilizing incentives, that means just utilizing uh, you know, nine fifteen point eight, meaning you. Have at least fifty percent of it?
Yeah, so I think that's.
Or twenty percent of the housing units being affordable, is that?
Eight point eight, right? The discussion of incentives, if there's twenty percent that are affordable.
Yeah, it should be.
So utilizing the incentives in nine fifteen eight. Which if we skip down to that, says all projects utilizing the M H O. Not less than twenty percent of the housing unit shall be constructed, shall be affordable. To an individual whose annual income is not more than. A certain percent of the area by median income.
This is, this is where we heard from. Developers in in other projects um in town that. They, they could have included affordable units if they could have added another story. But because the zoning kept them where they where they were, there was. No financial payback in the building for them to be able to pay for the housing.
Well, isn't this the whole reason for this? Overlay district really to incent. Uh denser development, um and the denser development means higher buildings and more floors, right?
Right, right. Yeah, I was in the corridor the other day trying to get a sense of the height of the um Holiday Inn Express building, cuz that's three with a peak roof.
Yep.
And maybe just for reference, it'd be.
I could go back.
Helpful if we can look at that, I mean, what do you think, do you think that's forty feet? Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah.
I'll see.
Well, the tricky thing about height.
Is how it's perceived.
It knows how it's measured.
We have a whole little guide on.
I think it's the midpoint of the gable.
Yes.
So. As.
So it would be, I think it's forty.
Point out in my first year here. That you can build a seventy foot tall A-frame in any residential zone.
I love that idea.
Where we have a thirty five foot height limit.
Howard Johnson.
Gotcha, okay.
Chris, the the twenty percent, how how does that work? So I have a building. And I've got ten units in it. If I buy into this thing, let's say I have to rebuild a super tall.
Mm hmm.
I gotta have two units in there that are affordable. But then the next, this next section said that for every unit. For, that I have to meet that twenty percent, but then I have. Um. Further incentives. These other requirements or these other, yeah, the requirements, you know, if I meet, if I'm at. A hundred to eighty one percent, that allows me one extra market rate units, so does that turn my project into an eleven story unit? Eleven stories, no. I mean, eleven units. Eleven unit building. In other words, if I meet the threshold and I've got two affordable ones, then I'm allowed two market ones if I'm renting them at a hundred. Uh between eighty one and and a hundred percent AMI. Am I making sense?
Well, well, this is, yeah, exactly, it it.
So then I could build twelve units.
Yeah. Yeah, and. Th- this was assuming that. That density requirement, which we deleted earlier tonight. But that was controlling projects to to um. Two thousand square feet of lot area per unit. So, so. In order to. Actually allow development to expand, you had to break away from that density requirement, so you could do one for one and go above the allowed density. But now, now we've taken the allowed density.
But I like the one for one.
Yeah.
So you're saying, when you said one for one, I guess I'm not following.
The dangers of the one for one, that will do. That you'll have a building with ten units and they'll only include one that's affordable. Because then that would be an requirement. So there has to be some.
You have to have twenty percent of the units being affordable anyway. Not, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's if you, uh what I'm suggesting, the hypothetical, if we don't have the twenty percent in there.
Then you don't fall into this bylaw, I mean, yeah.
What would be?
So here.
Wait, can I just ask a quick question? Are you wanting to remove the twenty percent?
I I think the twenty percent is is gonna be problematic unless we increase the AMI. To up to maybe a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty.
And that, that may be on the table, I don't know that we've had that discussion there.
To go back, the the way I proposed this initially is that for each additional. Unit that a developer would add, they would have to add. An affordable unit, I know that it creates less affordable housing, but that was the way that I had proposed it.
But can you, can I say that a quick, quick question? For each additional unit, so are you saying you, if you had ten to start. And you do one affordable, you get one more market rate?
So developer comes in.
Yeah.
And he can sit ten units by right, or not by right, but by according to the zone, right? If he chooses to go into the overlay, he can build another unit, but he has to build an affordable.
Mm hmm.
Or you can build two more units, but he has to build two affordable.
So everything beyond the base.
Yeah, so that's the logic, everything beyond the base is a one for one.
Okay. In, and you wanna substitute, you're you're hypothetically discussing substituting that for a twenty percent.
But. So how does that work? Because the incentive is height, right?
So I think if we go back to the studies that for regional planning did for us, they did like, what is, what is the base zoning allow? Right, so they they told us kind of like the base number of units on those.
But if we don't have a. Like if we're not limiting the number of units, right, it's just, so if we're saying like the unit size, like we're, there's no. There's no square footage minimum for a unit.
Correct.
Right, and so you could do all kinds of things, so isn't it just you're going beyond the?
Well, what I had proposed is that you have an equivalent unit.
Cuz we're not talking about going into setbacks, right?
We're talking about increasing the height.
Increasing the height, that's it.
So we're increasing the height, but then they still, they still need the parking requirements and all of that, right, so that's gonna increase, but does that not increase? Like, I'm. Right?
There's a, for you to try and think of all the hypotheticals, it's not gonna be.
No, but I'm wondering if like.
Each site is going to have specific character.
Like if their, if their idea is like, I need to maximize my number of units for this property that I have.
They all do.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, so they, so they've done that, right, and so, but that's gonna have, that's gonna have a lot to do with the parking required. And so now we're letting them go higher, so does that mean they make like?
Well, to go back to Brandy, you know, she she, when she brings up what um. What the the examples that were done for us. By first year regional planning, you saw it was way more parking that would be required.
Yeah.
On those gigantic buildings. So parking, again, is not gonna be a huge issue, I don't think.
It, it becomes like a puzzle to be solved.
Yeah, exactly, and I think you're, the point that you made though about the size of the unit. Is important because we, if we do away the twenty percent and we do a one for one, there would have to be an equivalent unit. So they can take maybe the smallest unit and they'd have to provide an equivalent affordable unit. In exchange.
I agree with the equivalency requirement, so that you don't get a substandard.
Yeah. But again. This will create the twenty percent where it does, what is that, it will create more units. Likely. Than what I'm, what I'm saying. But I, but I do think that just that limiting it to at one hundred percent will be a business. If you make it a legitimate. So that these guys can get more.
Well, so, could, could we seek some feedback maybe from construct about? Um. Just, just so that it's outside of this group's opinion, cuz I I don't really have a strong opinion on AMI and like what that upper threshold for. You know, being rent burdened in this area is, like, what, what level of income are people rent burdened here? Do we have that from the?
All we do in the house is.
All of them.
It's forty three percent people are, I believe it's forty three percent, I live twenty nineteen.
But where do they fall in terms of AMI?
There's another thing.
Wanna respond?
Yeah, yeah, there's, and I think it's a good, good thing, cuz there's another thing, and then I can't remember the term for it. But it it's this measure of the amount of money that people can afford. In, in relationship to the sort, to the median rent in the area, and people in Great Barrington. Great Barrington residents can afford something like two hundred and fifty dollars more than the median rent. But that was an interesting, I thought that would. Yet, there's forty three percent of people in town are rent burdened, so it's kind of an interesting.
But, but.
I had, and sorry, I asked June Wolf about this, and she's kind of like, yeah, I mean, I'm talking about it. Forty three percent of the tenants, not of the people in town.
Well, of, yeah, rent.
Yeah.
But does.
Thirty something of people who own.
And there's nothing that says this wouldn't have to be rentals either, right?
But if you're building workforce housing, or if you're trying to build workforce housing, like, those numbers won't hit on that, right, so if the idea is like, all of the people that.
People, most definitely.
Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is, if currently, if the people that are working in town can't live in town. Then the number that you say that people that are living in town can afford to pay, right, like, then that doesn't. That doesn't.
But if we think about the, but the feedback we've gotten from construct before was that, that. People in town who are living in from a lower cost housing could move into slightly more.
Yeah, I get that.
And that would then free up, so it ended up being like a shuffle.
Well, that's why I think house, about general ways.
Also, I, I, I mean, we're talking about Stockbridge Road, so I don't think that's a venue for high-end housing. You know, so I think it's perfect for workforce housing. You know, I think those are the people who are gonna. Live there, you're not gonna get second homers. You know, renting properties on Stockbridge Road.
And so that's why, like, the hundred fifty idea, like, so what is that, right? So, like, what I'm interested in is, so what is like for a, like a single earner household? Like, what is that hourly rate? Cuz if we're talking about workforce housing, you should, like, we should at least be thinking of that, right? And, you know, and then for like a two earner household, what does that mean? What is thirty percent of that? Meaning, so thirty percent of that gives you an hourly rate, right?
Well, we, we add those numbers and.
Yeah, and so. That's what I'm interested, you know, so like, if a hundred and fifty, if you're talking, you know, if it's like, what is that an hour, if it's forty dollars an hour, is that really workforce housing, right, and so. I mean, it is a certain kind of workforce housing, but.
Oh, definitely, I think what we get from sensitive family four. And then they break it down.
Right.
The, the, the single family and the couple is hard to find, I think that.
It goes by household.
A household tie, so you have, there is the one, the two, that, you know, it doesn't say how many people are earning in the household, but, I mean, one, you can assume it's one.
So, okay, so let's, let's fill this down.
Randy, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
And when we're thinking about housing, how much is rental and how much is owned? Is that a distinction that's in question significant?
I, I don't know that it's a distinction we're proposing to make here, it would just be units and the form of ownership would be determined by the developer. So it could take the form of a condo, but I think if it's affordable, it's probably gonna be rental, but you're not.
No, but you could do, you, I mean, you can do the same thing for either with affordable, I mean, it's the same metric, right? And so there.
I think we can think about incentives for providing rentals. And or providing an entry, as well, one of them.
That was interesting, what you guys were thinking, in when you're envisioning the housing, if you are at all.
I think Stockbridge Road is a, is a venue for rentals. Yeah, that's right.
Also, we've had that conversation.
Cuz we love it.
We, we've had conversations about um the lack of, like starter type housing where people can build some equity, right, I think you can make that point pretty regularly. And that's a fair point. Um.
I mean, that's, I don't think.
I don't know if that needs to be defined here, I mean, I think that's a question we confirm.
Isn't that the developer's decision?
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but again, we can incentivize a developer's decision by saying that I don't want. Just out of the top of my head, something like you can, you, for every, you, uh, extra unit of. Affordable rental housing, if you do your project and it's all rental. Then your incentive is not a one for one, maybe it's a two for one, maybe it's something else, you know, it could be some other incentive. Well, maybe the parking requirements are reduced. Maybe we say that whatever the. The incentivized units are, they have to be the same as the other units, so if they're all. For sale, then those have to be for sale. Or is there all rentals, then those have to be rentals? Well, that, yeah, that would just be absurd, then, I'm suggesting an incentive. To produce, if this board were interested in producing either rentals or, or condominium. If we were interested in do, in doing that, in actually dictating. I think the money, the money here is in rentals. On Stockbridge Road. Sure, I mean.
Yes.
I don't worry, but that's a long-term, that's for a long-term developer, sure, you know, developer looking to get out of this project in five years, gonna wanna sell this one. And they wanna stick around for a while. Yeah, look at what a hard time they had on Good Street.
Should we think about then ownership type? And like, we don't have any permission at all in here.
I don't know, it's, I, I really don't, to me, it's whatever housing gets produced is a win for me at this point.
So it's maybe a nice to have, not a need to have?
Yeah.
Okay, so then let's go back to the um, the two primary issues that seem to have risen up in the discussion about. Nine point fifteen point eight, one is, should there be a. A base calculation of density and then a one for one provision for the affordability? Or should there be a percentage threshold, and I don't have a really strong sense from the group what the preference is, um. But I, I think we had more discussion on the one for one, but um. Pedro points out the downside might be less affordable units overall. So Malcolm, do you have any thoughts on? On a one for one sort of incentive for affordable units versus a minimum percent threshold?
So. Were, are we generally agreed that um. Depending on the definition of affordable um or whatever the threshold is, uh, we're looking at a base of twenty percent?
That's the question, so I, I, I think there's two issues for this section, one is whether or not we have a minimum percent of affordable units. That are, are achieved through the incentive. Um, or if we have a base density from the underlying zone and then a one for one provision for adding affordable, and then the second issue I think is. What the AMI gets defined as.
Right.
And the sense is maybe we should increase the AMI, I feel like the group feels a little bit better about increasing the upper end of the AMI. So maybe we don't have to discuss that, it's more, are we going twenty percent or are we going as well for one?
I mean, in, in, in theory, I'm comfortable with the twenty percent of housing units uh and whatever, a hundred and twenty percent or whatever, but I'd like, like Jeremy, I'd like to see the numbers. What is a hundred and twenty percent? Uh, you know, and and but. In theory, I'm, I'm okay with that, and then um I'm also good with the uh one for one or the one and a half for one, uh, you know, depending on affordability thresholds.
So, so, okay, so maybe let's answer the easier question first, so. So if we increase the AMI, the maximum AMI from a hundred percent to something north of a hundred percent. Hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty, whatever that is.
So.
Maybe we reflect that from data in the housing needs study, Chris?
A hundred percent of AMI currently for a four-person household is ninety two thousand one hundred.
Ninety two. For a four-person.
For a four-person?
Four-person household, ninety two thousand one hundred.
How about for a, a two-person household?
Seventy three thousand six eighty.
Is that for the county or is that for Great Barrington?
It's for Great Barrington, which is based on county, excluding Pittsburgh. It's for Great Barrington, which is based on county, excluding Pittsville.
And what's.
So it's seventy-six.
It's pretty, it's pretty high for Great Barrington.
Ninety-two thousand. Go ahead, man.
Wha- what's the, uh. What is the, um, uh, percentage of gross income that should be, um, maximum? Spend on housing?
Don't we say thirty percent?
Thirty, housing is affordable if the household is not spending more than thirty percent of their income.
But, but, but that's also including heat and.
Yeah, on housing costs.
Yeah, all housing costs.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Good point.
Affordable rent for a hundred percent AMI for a person household is twenty-three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
What unquote affordable rent.
So two, the, the number you gave for a two-person household comes down to a person earning around thirty-three dollars an hour. Okay, the answer, Jeremy. Sorry, that's a hundred percent. So somebody earning forty might be making a hundred and thirty percent.
Chris, what's the one, one-person household for a hundred percent?
One-person household, a hundred percent of AMI is sixty-four thousand four seven zero. I don't think I can do this for Great Barrington. That's what, those are the numbers. We can't use.
No, I understand.
It's actually in discussion, so.
So Jeremy, based on a forty-hour work, that's a thirty dollar an hour job.
So that's sixteen twenty-five on housing costs.
But again, that's gotta include all of your housing.
Not just your rent.
No, no, I know.
So if we went to one fifty?
And what do, what do developers think they need rental-wise? Uh, or, uh, you know, is twenty-two thousand or fifteen hundred a month? Is that, I, I don't know.
Depends. Yeah, it depends on a lot of factors. I, I actually did try to run a few pro formas. You know, not much more than the back of the napkin, but, I mean, it depends on a lot of factors, the land cost, the lending rates, how much you want profit, et cetera, et cetera. Wh- whether or not it makes use in like a bankable tenant who's carrying the rest of the project, there's so many factors.
And your construction costs now.
I mean, construction costs. So, but I, I did try to. Go through it, and, and that's how I came up with. This one, two, three list on page, whatever it was, like, how, how many more market-rate units? Would pay for a more affordable housing unit? I was trying to figure out what that delta was, what that difference was between construction cost of an affordable unit. And if you held it at a really low rent rate, how many market-rate units would you need to pay that? And I was. I at least had a hat and a brain put into that, but I don't know, it, it varies quite a bit.
Yeah.
I like what you did, I think it's smart.
Um, I mean, it seems to me we need to know something about the answer to those questions in order to determine whether this is gonna be effective or not.
Yeah, yeah, of course, um.
What, what are the, the, the Maple Street apartments, di- did they, uh, disclose what their rents would be when they proposed that? I can't remember. The nursing home converted to the.
Uh, I, I think they said something in the three.
You're talking about the, so.
Nursing home.
It's, it's, it will be in front of you. So you can talk about the previous project, but not about the current application.
No, I was talking about the previous project.
For the record, so, but I think at the previous application, they did talk about rents in the three thousand dollar amount.
So we would, that would be like.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be market rate, right?
Okay, they, and they said they were market rate, they were not discussing affordable at that point in time.
Right. So if they were gonna make twenty percent of theirs affordable, then their market rate. Rents might have to go up to thirty-five hundred or four thousand, we might be able to play with those numbers, just. For, if that's the market rate, three thousand or thirty-five hundred, then that gives us a baseline to work from.
I feel like we're not the most well-equipped to like, to calculate that, because there are too many variables that we don't have anything to over.
But you.
I'm thinking micro.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, so, it sounds to me like, in general, we are open to adjusting the AMIs. Upward to be more inclusive of more wage earners in the community, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how far upward, we don't know. But one fifty has been thrown out.
We, the typical quote-unquote workforce.
Yeah.
Unit, ha- workforce housing unit versus quote-unquote affordable housing unit.
Yeah.
Is eighty percent of AMI to one-twenty percent of AMI is the quote-unquote workforce. Too silly, because people even making thirty percent are in the workforce, so, but that's. Right. The term of our.
But since we don't have any statutory requirement from the state that's telling us what the upper end is.
Just the general.
Yeah.
Working guideline.
And, and that's valid, it gives us some basis for a rational decision, right? Um, I mean, do we wanna go with one-twenty as the upper end here? And then, you know, when we seek public comment on that, see if we can solicit some specific feedback on them?
Well, you're being, you know, that one. Yeah, I think, I think one plan is reasonable.
All right, so we'll.
But because.
Can you shift these percentages?
When, when, uh, Land Trust is trying to give away, not the Land Trust, the, no, the, uh, affordable housing. Yeah, was trying to give away money for, uh, first-time home buyers.
Yeah.
Down payment assistance. You know, we started out at, at like eighty percent or something, and then a hundred percent, and you, you had to get up to like a hundred and twenty percent before anyone could even afford it.
Okay.
Could take advantage of it. So, yeah, I think one-twenty is a good starting point, anyway.
And maybe we go up from there? Okay. So if in the top of page three, um, we put in, uh. Affordable to an individual or household, their annual income is not more than one-twenty percent of the AMI?
So I'll just run those numbers for you real quick.
Okay.
So a four-person household at a hundred and twenty AMI.
Uh-huh.
Their affordable housing cost is twenty-seven sixty-three per month, quote-unquote, or that's what they report. Yeah, that's a, that's a. Pretty significant rental rate. Where housing, that's.
Not for new construction.
Yeah, given the, the, the cost of new construction, that may be what you need, um, on the other hand, it may be a really big giveaway.
So, so for persons, that's.
I can give you, Jeremy, what you wanna know, just.
Um, I could do that.
But, I mean, it, it seems to me that. That we have nonprofits that are dedicated to producing housing for.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, developers aren't gonna compete for that, that.
Sure.
And the thing that's missing, that we care so much about is that missing, that.
Yeah.
This is what this is all about.
It's, it's not about competing though, Jonathan, I think. Private development can. Put two, four, six units into the marketplace faster than the CDC can, forty-five units at a time.
No, there's no question about that, but, but. They also aren't getting the kind of money that those people are getting.
Right.
And so, I, you know, I think for, for workforce, it's great, but they're not gonna be doing affordable housing.
Only if they got enough of an incentive to do it.
Even, even then, I don't think they are.
Okay.
By the way, I, I, a hundred and fifty percent for the fourth, uh, person family, uh, in my calculation, comes out to thirty-four fifty a month for housing. Which approaches market rate, really.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna increase the AMI. Um, we've not really settled on, uh, a twenty percent or a one-for-one, that is still an open issue.
Still making that.
Um, we have not talked about parking. And, um, so we should look at that. So we've got a provision for parking in the rear. One space per dwelling unit. Um.
What if someone wanted to go to forty micro units? We have forty parking spaces for that.
They're using a car, yes.
Yeah, or they could seek a special permit to reduce the parking requirement.
But that special permit comes from us.
Default is the funny word.
I, I have a, I have another concept for parking. Um. Uh, 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 yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking about a zone that's out in an area that you have to drive to, if you're going to or from. Um, I, I think, um, I think we should have one and a half spaces per unit. But I think in the commercial portion of the multi-use, we should give them. Parking incentives for fifty percent of the residential parking for use in the commercial use. As opposed to reducing the requirements for each category.
If having a gamble.
So, do you have some suggested language for that, that you can, um, share with Chris?
Uh, no, it's just, uh, uh, well, I have a note in my notebook, but nothing, uh, specific language-wise, but, um.
Can you email the concept to Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's more of a shared parking kind of.
Shared, yeah, I mean, that's the concept, right? We, we wanna reduce parking because we have people parking at night, and we have people parking today, and we give incentive, across incentives for using shared parking.
Mm-hmm, that's a very practical approach.
Depends on the commercial use, right?
It does, and, yeah, I mean, you know, the builder is gonna have to, you know, decide, and anybody renting. Commercial property there is gonna say, is there enough parking for my business? Um, so the builder's gonna have to take that into consideration, but I think in terms of the town, I think that would be a good, uh, good, uh, minimum, anyway.
You know, I like this because the builder will probably build more parking anyway.
I mean, if they wanna rent these places, uh, either for residential or commercial, they have to make sure there's enough parking.
But if we set our, 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 you know, minimums really low, they're gonna get, the right amount of parking is always needed, but I believe.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Parking in rear, we're all good with that?
Yep.
Um, okay. All right.
So if you park in the rear.
Yes.
And if you have a ten-foot side yard, how do you get there?
Sidewalk. Five-foot sidewalk.
Hmm? What?
Five-foot sidewalk.
No, how do you get, if you have parking in the rear, and you've got a building built to ten-foot side, side yard?
Yeah.
How do you get parking?
Is it a?
Either through a central corridor at the first floor level. Where you could have a door out to the street or a door out to the parking, right? Because if you're gonna have.
Again, drive through the middle of the building, you're saying?
This is for cars.
Oh, you're asking how is one physically get there?
Yeah.
It's not a, it's a minimum, it's not a maximum. Only bikes.
You could share access or the adjacent lot, you could build a, build it further from the sideline.
I didn't realize you were gonna pull your car into a driveway. Yeah, i- if they have a driveway, they may need more than ten feet in the side yard, right? And I think as long as we don't restrict the side yard for use of the driveway, it could be very minor. You know, it's gonna be sixteen feet or something that they need to provide for the driveway.
Hmm.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just. Yeah, if, if, if you build to the setback, she can't catch you apart, basically.
That's why now they're gonna all do that.
Okay.
Well, let's say.
All right, so then there were some open-ended questions that Chris had provided us as far as landscape requirement. Um, open space impermeability, lighting, and any other design standards. So we do have that Route Seven landscape requirement, which we've been kicking around. And we don't have a separate zoning amendment for adjustment of that provision, but we've said maybe we need to, right?
Could be.
We should probably take that up as separate.
All the trees went away, so, and how do you, how do you make parking permeable?
What do you mean?
You mean permanently, or when?
Well, I mean, there are different ways to do it, but. How about plowing? So. If you use those, what are the open pavers?
Permeable paper.
What are they?
Permeable paper.
Permeable paper.
Yeah.
Um, how do those survive plowing?
They survive plowing just fine.
Do they?
They do, they are field-tested for New England.
With your.
They're, they're strong.
They're, they're, um, they're set on a thicker course of aggregate.
Uh-huh.
Um, that typically includes some finer aggregate right below the paper, and then some coarse aggregate that acts as, um. Of, uh, an area to hold a certain volume of stormwater, so you, you almost get a degree of underwater or under pavement. Water storage that then can either, depending on your soils, be either infiltrated into your soil, you're good infiltration, or can be underdrained and discharged into your storm source.
Asphalt works too.
Yeah.
Asphalt can be made as permeable asphalt.
Really?
Yeah, it does require maintenance, it requires like backing, annual backing, especially if you're using like a sand salt mix in the winter for traction agent.
I did see the back, like, two years ago, Holly Inn put permeable parking in.
Really?
Speaking of Holly Inn, forty feet, it's just under forty feet to the midpoint of the gate.
Okay.
So that's the existing B-two height, goes to three stories or forty feet.
They came back and added.
Holly Inn is at thirty-nine six.
Uh-huh.
Anyway, but they do have permeable parking, uh, uh, in the one parking lot closest to the eye doctor's.
Okay. I'll check it out.
I'm trying to think, um, I'll try and think of who's got papers. I, I can think of a bunch of places, or like, like Bard College has got a ton of that installed.
Hmm.
That you can go.
University of New Han- New Hampshire has done a lot of new studies, so it's New England-tested.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there are, if you're creating new impermeables, there are already stormwater management provisions, I just. I'm concerned we see more stormwater runoff in a short time now with the way rainfall patterns are, and so, having some provisions. For parking permeability is, is at least helpful. I would also, you know, be willing to swap more trees. Um, and I think Malcolm, I mean, for, for adjacency to the residential zone on the east side of Route Seven. I'd like to see some landscaping there to provide some degree of buffer between the residential properties. And, and MX, we show you.
You have to, you have to hide the headlights.
Yeah.
Of all the parking that you're gonna put back there.
Right. And the streetlights, right?
Well, yeah.
Well, I don't think there's gonna be big buildings in front of the residential section, because there's not, I mean, the big lots are on the other side of the road, aren't they?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think of like the, the lot where Four Brothers is, right, that.
Right.
Or, you could put a pretty good sign.
Yeah, there's residential beyond that, and then also where, uh, Goodwill and, uh, former Wonderful Things, uh.
Yeah, or the.
Blue Hill, what about the Blue Hill Corner?
Yeah, that's, that's one.
No, 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 that's.
No, that's fair of you.
Every terrace.
How soon you forget, Jonathan?
So, um, would you, should, you want me to suggest some landscaping language, Chris?
Sure, but, but, no, I mean, we've got these landscaping departments, property-wise.
But, but, no, I mean, we've got these landscaping requirements and property lines. Shall be screened for non- residential uses.
You were just thinking our general provisions for landscaping, can we just apply them there?
Or maybe we just review them or we review the Route Seven requirements. I mean. We have these things, I don't know, you know, we don't.
I don't.
Look at it enough.
Any problem using stuff we already have. I don't think we need to invent new requirements. So yeah, maybe we just reference the general landscape requirements in six three. And Route Seven six two. Does that work for everybody in the short term?
Sorry, was I, we should, shouldn't we talk about the Route Seven?
Well, I think the question is trees, do we want? To change that thinking because we ended up with. We've ended up with several things. We've ended up with a requirement for a lot of trees in a very small available space, right? That becomes somewhat impractical. But we've also ended up agonizing over a tree in a space that has not been viable and. Was pulled out once it died. So the goal would be to get some meaningful street tree.
We pull the tree warding.
My framework is to go meet with the tree committee. Do they have a new chair now?
I don't know, but I see the McDonald's planted their trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd like the planning board to have a partnership with the tree committee where the tree committee has some. Has some agency in helping.
We should get.
See the street trees being thoughtful.
Adopt a.
Adopt a tree, yeah, exactly. Something along those lines. Um. But, but I think the major question is we require one tree per twenty five feet of frontage. And do we want to reduce that to fifty?
Yes.
I mean, it seems like for that. Kind of highway oriented. Road. That's probably not out of line.
I like Chris's suggestion about tree size because if it's. One crab apple tree, you could do one per twenty five, but if you're going to do a larger tree like.
Right, or a super.
That's one, one for one hundred.
Downtown, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, downtown on Main Street. The small ornamentals are about one for each twenty five feet.
Mm-hmm.
And the large, larger landscape trees, the elms and the maples and the oaks are about. Fifty feet or a hundred feet. I mean, they're interspersed.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and if we use the tree committee's li- list, you know, a- as defined by the tree committee's list.
Yep.
And if it becomes a walking strip, then, then you can add additional trees.
Sure, sure.
But I think for a driving strip. You know, fifty feet is fine.
What comes first? Hmm, well, it is a, it is a watching strip now. I mean, there's lots of people that use it for. Transportation to go shopping and for people, and there's still people that use it for transportation to get to work. I mean, I, there's plenty of both happening right now, and then also there are kids that use it for transportation.
Yeah, the sidewalk's buffered, it's not an unpleasant sidewalk.
No, it is, it's well used.
Except going over that bridge.
Yeah.
And you're inches from the trucks coming by.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, you have to make a, a left turn before that.
So, okay, so it sounds like you're comfortable with changing the requirements in six point two. To allow for a. A larger or a lesser number of trees. On the front edge, if it's a larger tree.
It's a large.
Yes, that's good.
Okay, so that's a separate.
Sure, larger at the time of plans.
Well, so I would like that.
I think both, right? Larger at the time of planning and larger.
So we need to.
It's gonna grow larger.
Yeah.
Not just. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, cause we've been letting people plant really tiny little whips of trees and then there's no, they're just dying and they're.
I mean, look, in the end, this, this thing for me is the best point to you, it's a great idea, it's so awesome to have a tree at twenty five feet. But a lot of, cause, you know, a lot of the landowners have been bad, almost have many. Look at it and it's, you know, as an owner, it's for that. Costs money, you know, plant it and the whole thing.
And so maybe there's a provision for a donation to tree committee in lieu of.
Yeah, I like that.
Can we do that?
You could waive landscape requirements, basically.
No, we don't waive it, that's a great idea. That way we fund. The tree committee. To, you know, kind of develop a program for tree tree planting, that's a great idea, I love that.
Or you can buy some trees to plant on the right away.
Right.
They're right, that's the point, like you give it to the tree committee and then.
So that this, this state can just.
More work for that. Or.
States are coming in.
Yeah. Pretending the global works. But yeah, I like that. I, I don't know if you want the tree committee spending money. Well, you know. It would all go somewhere and somebody. Tree committee can advise the select board. Chris is looking at. Have a dedicated fund. Chris is looking at me at the side of his eyes saying, you just created more work for me.
Did you see that?
Okay, what else? I think, I think that's enough for tonight.
Well, I.
Or is there anything we forgot, Chris?
I, I, I think. You know, um, I think you should think about the design standards and performance standards. The Smart Growth Early District. You know, in return for, this gets to Malcolm's original point about what will this look like? We give something by right.
Hmm.
You know. Malcolm. Says, you know, that not a good idea, the town should retain special permit control over this. The way this by right question is addressed in the Smart Growth Early District is that there are design guidelines. That, that must be met. So you at least have a general idea of what, what type of building you're going to build. So that's how this Markworth overly district handles it. So if this stays as a. By right situation. Which I, I think it should or it won't be used. I think you should think about the design guidelines, and the ones in the Smart Growth District are not a bad guideline.
Okay, okay.
So, so take a look at those.
Okay.
And they, they don't get into, you know. It must be stucco or glass and steel and gables versus whatever.
I think that's always the issue.
It's.
But don't you think aesthetically you, you never get what you want?
I never get what I want, but.
I know, that's. I mean, I guess.
If you want something, then you should build that thing.
Well, that's what I, I, no, that's what I.
Just get a dog.
Okay, so we'll, we will do that.
Yeah, exactly, you're right, Randy is kind.
Alright, uh. So. Lance, are you able to?
Yeah.
Give us a updated text in. Should we have just one conversation with that? That Jonathan.
Right.
She was giving Chris lots of work, so.
And I was.
And a deadline.
Um.
Like in a month?
So. Oh, yeah, this, this won't take, this won't take too much now that it's mostly on paper. Um.
Well, I think you told us our next December meeting had a number of applications we needed to focus on.
We'll have, uh. The, the Maple, one forty Maple Avenue Special Permit Public Hearing is the next meeting, but. First December meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Um, I think the second, isn't the second December meeting is Barrington Brook again?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty nine.
Twenty second?
No, yeah, that.
I think we're in.
Yeah, anyway.
Maybe that was.
No.
Like the January.
Your money.
It's, we needed, and we needed two months.
Six weeks or whatever.
Yeah.
Two months.
Um, so we can put this on the agenda for the. First December meeting.
Sure.
Which is the eighth, right?
Uh huh, and if we get to it, great.
Okay.
If special permit hearing runs long and.
Okay. Yeah, so let's do that.
So we'll shoot for that, um. If folks have individual comments, you can email me directly and I'll try to incorporate those into a vice draft, just don't leave it too late.
Okay.
And I'll look to. Uh, bring in the landscaping, Randy, if you want to help with that.
Yeah.
And maybe at the next meeting, we'll talk more about the design guidelines.
Okay.
From the SCOT.
Right, using that as. Your starting point, or maybe it's perfect.
To a question, we, we've spoken earlier about. Redoing the design guidelines we have.
Performance standards.
The performance standards and making those into sort of design guidelines. Should we consider just doing that as having it as a section?
Yeah, I, I, I think we should look at the performance standards in general. Um. Let's do, let's do that at least at the second, are we gonna have two meetings in December?
Twenty second is the, yeah, second one. If it's.
Well, Chris, my question was whether or not we wanted to have separate, we should, I think we should discuss having. Separate design standards for this overlay. Or should we just have one like that?
You're saying like hold this out of the SCOT. And do some sort of mashup with. Either review it and see.
I'm asking, I, I want to.
Probably not, I don't think design guidelines.
Or generally.
I, I think design guidelines have to be area specific, every part of town, every part of the corridor is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Performance standards, though, lighting, there, all those things can be.
How about character?
Character. There were characters about.
We're all characters, so.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you so much. Um, so then I think Jonathan had something he wanted to introduce in terms of a possible. Modification to the water quality protect, is it the water quality protection or what?
No, it's actually the, it's the. Uh. Seven point. Two or something is the aviation. Yeah. Basically, the way it's written.
Oh, seven point two, special regulations, aviation fields.
Yeah, the way it's written. Uh, you could never put it in an airport. Yeah. And so. The town council, the last time it came through, suggested language. It should be added.
And so maybe. I, I think you sent me that language, but I don't think. Uh, that it went out to the larger group, so.
I got this from Chris, so I don't know whether, Chris, did you copy Brandy and?
I copied Brandy.
Yeah, I think that's it. So we probably want to share that out with the, with the larger group and bring it up at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
So potential amendment to seven point two.
It's as advised by town council. Two years ago. So you can only have it in one district.
Okay.
As a district that allows it technically. It number point number one. And kind of makes it impossible. Yeah, well, that was, that was the, that was our county council and the administrator of the Aeronautics Division.
Is it?
They'll take.
Chris, is it, um, I have it right here, I can forward the memo. To this group. Do that right now.
It's the second paragraph on page four.
Should that be, should that be shared on the screen so it's part of the open meeting?
I, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna all share out the memo now, we'll put it on the next meeting's agenda. And then, uh, so that you guys can read it, digest it, and then we can have a discussion at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
If that's. Yes, we, if we can do that.
Since, since we didn't, we were really talking about housing tonight and this is different, so I'd rather put it on an agenda.
No, we can't vote on it again.
Okay, was there anything else? Nothing?
There are planning board trainings coming up. So if anybody's interested, let me know, Jackie, I've got your stuff.
Yeah.
And.
I'm signing down as well and registering.
No going back now.
She's screaming.
There was.
That'll be a test.
There was also a notice of the housing workshop.
End of January.
End of January, January thirtieth or something.
It's the last.
Tuesday, I think it was a Tuesday, a fifth Tuesday. Okay. Um, so if there's nothing else. For the board, we'll see if the public has any comments.
There's a hand raise.
Looks like there is a hand raise.[1757.88]